It's 7 o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting of the Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. And... Yeah, my machine? No, I said not my machine.
Oh.
McInerney Slater here. Bain?
Here.
Chmansky?
Here.
Eddy?
Here.
Trappa? Absentance moves. Cherokee?
Here.
We have a quorum? All right, next is approval of or amendments to the agenda. Can we get a motion?
Mike, can we just see where the date was here on that?
No, this is for the agenda for today.
Oh, yes. All right, go ahead and make the motion approved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of January 15th, 2020?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. File?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Since when do we do this, aren't it? Board of Appeals, preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulties based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by Section 27.05, Ordinance Number 126. There are five members of the ZBA, three members constitute quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA must first have a public hearing at which time the applicant will present his or her case and then any public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions for clarification. If a particular plant gets belabored, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move into the deliberation phase of the particular request before us. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to stay or leave as you wish. The first item of new business that we have is ZBA Appeal 2020-001, 9034 Field Road and 3480 Field Road. Property owner of 9034 Field is seeking a variance to split a portion of 9034 Field Road parcel in alignment with the 3480 Fruit Road parcel. Variance would also include allowing dual zoning of R1 Family Residential and I1 Industrial District for this newly created parcel. So if we could have the applicant approach? If you could state your name and address for the record and give us an overview of the request for variance?
Her name's Mark and Sandy Bezora, live at 9034 Field Road. All right, we're looking to take 32 acres roughly, plus or minus, and add it to the parcel that we're currently using for blue water materials. Now, the part that's on my house that's R1, we're leaving that part of the parcel R1. If that's what you decide, and then the pit will stay industrial.
But aren't you requesting the part that you're splitting and moving to the industrial for that to remain R1?
Yes. Yes, a lot of people are getting confused, thinking that that's going to industrial. It's not. It's just, we're trying to gain them together.
Is that it?
Yeah, and it's a simple, just a land split.
Correct, a land split.
People are trying to read a lot into it.
The reason, just for clarification for everybody in the room, the actual variance requested is after the lot split, they would have dual zoning on a parcel of this body, does not decide anything to do with what will be done with the property itself. We're not rezoning, it would just be a lot split and whether or not to allow the dual zoning. Am I understanding correctly?
Exactly. They say there's been a lot of talk, I've been reading a bunch of stuff in, and it just gets ridiculous with social media.
All right, well, if you have nothing else, we'll allow public comment and then probably have you back up to answer some questions.
That's fine.
If you have public comment, you can approach the microphone.
Good evening, Gary Yenelak, on behalf of Matthew Mullen and the adjacent property owner. I put together a written summary outlining our position and opposition to this request, and I would want that letter to be part of the public record in these proceedings, and I'm just going to go through part of it briefly. In the first comment, in their application, the applicant said, "My appeals to request a variance of section blank." They didn't fill it in, so no one in the public knows what section they're asking a variance for as to that particular section of some ordinance, the Township Zoning Ordinance. They say they want just a simple split, but in conjunction with that, they say dual zoning classification. So my second comment was that your ordinance in Section 2704 says, "The zoning Board of Appeals shall not have the power to alter or change the zoning district classification of any property, nor make any change in the terms or intent of this ordinance, but does have the power to act on those matters for which this ordinance provides an administrative review, interpretation, or variance." What they're in essence seeking is a zoning classification, they said that in their application and tonight, that they want industrial and residential for the same piece of property. So they're asking, in essence, for a change in the zoning classification, which the ZBA by statute and by your ordinance doesn't have the authority to grant. The third comment was pursuant to Section 27.04, the Clay Township ZBA has no authority to grant that suggested change in the zoning classification. The property owner, if they want to change their zoning classification, they have to file a petition for rezoning with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would conduct a public hearing, and then at the conclusion of that, make a recommendation to the Clay Township Board, and the Clay Township Board would then act on that because a change to the zoning classification, in essence, is a legislative action, and that authority under the Zoning Enabling Act is restricted to the Township Board after the Township Planning Commission has its public hearing and makes its recommendation. The fourth comment was that there are certain criteria in your ordinance, five criteria to grant a variance, but they didn't address in their submission those five criteria. They give no engineering or soil boring tests as to the nature of the sand in that particular piece of property. Section 2705, space four, says, "A variance under this ordinance shall not be granted, which permits a use not otherwise permitted within the zoning district upon the property for which a variance is being requested." Then I referenced Exhibit 3, excerpt from your ordinance. So you don't have the authority to let them do what they're requesting. Your ordinance says you can only have a mining operation in an industrial zoning district, which is the I1, after you have a special approval land use. So if they had an industrial classification, they'd then have to go to the Planning Commission, do the special approval land use request, have the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission would act on that. So that's something down the road, so to speak, but it's not within the ZBA's jurisdiction to grant. The... My clients own the fee simple interest to this approximately 19 acres of property, including the fee simple ownership interest of this 77 feet. When this piece was created and these pieces, this was put in place to give access because the frontage on the back portion of this L-shaped piece of property was occupied by these lots. So in the split process, you have to have access to a public road, which that gave. And the documents that were recorded and approved by Clay Township says it's for ingress and egress only. They've, the neighboring property owner, has dug a ditch here without my client's approval for drainage. You can't put any utilities in it, it's only for access, and it's for access for this piece that fronts on Fruit Road to the east of the driveway in this piece here that's zone industrial. It doesn't give access to the property to the north. So even if they combine these, which I don't think you have the authority to do a combination, because if you want a lot combination, you go through the Assessment Department, which they've already done and was denied, and if they deny you, then your remedy is to go to the Circuit Court to say under the Land Division Act, "I was entitled to a split or a combination, the municipality didn't grant that, and I'm asking the judge to grant that authority." But they don't have any right, if they did any combination, to gain access to this piece, which is shown on the money survey across this 77 feet. I gave you their survey documents that show what their land configuration is and how they intend to split it, but they have access through Field Street, and so they don't need access on this 77 feet if Clay Township, the appropriate body, not the ZBA, granted the split, or if somebody went to Circuit Court and the Circuit Court judge said the split was appropriate. And I attached to this Exhibit 6, the denial from the Building Department and from the Assessment Department in December of 2019 and January of this year as to those denials. Then I gave you the Google map showing the configuration and the layout of these two adjacent properties. They have access off of Field Street, so that's why they don't need access through the 77 feet that my client owns. I think their petition is legally flawed and fatal, and you don't have the jurisdiction to grant them any of the relief requested because your ordinance clearly says the ZBA doesn't have the authority to change the zoning. If they want to change the zoning, they got to go through the Planning Commission and the Township Board, and there's nothing in the Clay Township ordinance, and they cite no provision, that says the ZBA can grant dual zoning classification to any piece of property in your township. So we would ask that you deny their request, and if you had any questions of me, I'd try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I revert to that, please? You can, or we can wait till all the public comments are done and have a chance to comment again. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? You have to come up to the microphone. I need you to make sure you state your name and address before you speak.
Robin Wagenhaus, and I live at 8987 Field Road. He's a hard act to follow, so, but I have some very down-to-earth questions, and many of us in the neighborhood on Field have gotten together several times and discussed quite a few things, and a lot of it, I don't even know some of the things that he said, if he covered that, because he might have, and I don't know. So I'm just going to ask, because there's a lot here that are concerned. On Field Road, because of where I live, which is by the, next door to the dog kennel, when I am heading south, if I went straight, there's a road that goes back to the gravel pit.
No, that's my driveway to my house.
Or is that your driveway?
Right.
Right.
Nothing to do with that.
Well, I know they say there's nothing to do with the pit, but there are many neighbors here who watch gravel trucks and everything else come out of that drive, which comes out there. I've called, I know the neighbors have all called, we've talked to Mr. Bryson, we've called the police, because some of them, it's a residential neighborhood, it's 35 miles an hour, we have children and grandchildren, we walk on that road, and let me tell you, I've been forced into the ditch more than once because they are hot, and they're not supposed to be there, according to Mr. Bryson. Now whether, I don't know the law, but I was told they're supposed to go out on to Fruit Street. So is anywhere in all those plans, the feasibility that they're trying to take one of those drives and put a road in through there?
I can't address that. We are only here to decide whether or not to allow dual zoning of that parcel. We have no authority over any of those other issues.
Okay. Now, there's a lot of us here who don't know who to address about it.
It would either be the Township Supervisor.
Okay, which is art.
The Township, yeah, Township Board, or if it does go before the Planning Commission, they would have that type of authority that we don't have.
Okay, I mean, because we have other concerns that all are connected.
Right.
To this whole thing, and we really, I've been up here more than once and discussed it, but have really never gotten any, gotten anywhere with it.
This board has very limited authority as to what we do and don't do.
Okay, all right, well, those, the road situation and what goes on on that road, that is a concern for all of us, so I guess we'll just have to wait until we get a notice to tell us what to do next. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Kelly Nader, 9099 Maple. I'm concerned because we're doing another zoning change, ordinance change, when we could really possibly just do a special land use, and I understand the property is pending sale, so anybody could say what they're going to use it for, what are the new owners going to use it for. This, I'm confused also because I understand they want to keep their home residential. Behind my property is that currently residential, because I understood it's residential when they went to the Township, and they want to make it residential industrial so that they could pump the water to dry the land, to mine the sand. So that is going to be major equipment going in my backyard, in all of our backyard, plus is this water, does it have, has there been a, let me see what it's called here? Is there an environmental assessment, an impact environment assessment? I mean...
Again, these are questions that I can't answer. We're only here whether or not we're allowing a variance for dual zoning.
It appears we're here at the end, you guys are making a decision, and none of the beginning is done. It seems like, as residents and taxpayers, we have no, can never get any answers. I went to the Township, and it's kind of different what they're saying. I want to know what's going to be in my backyard, I want the truth. And this is a residential area, and you're going to put industrial in the middle, and residential, industrial, we'll have big equipment going. On Field Road, one of the residents said, "It comes 7:00 in the morning, the equipment starts." He says, "There's pumps going all night long, you hear it running, then 7:00, there's construction." So it's just, I'm not for this, especially if we don't have answers, we can't even get answers. Thank you.
Joanna, come up.
Sherry Ayla, 5337 Harvest Court. I am just concerned about the water that's being pumped from that property, and it's an environmental impact. We can't pump our salt water from our basements into the ditches, but we can, but they can pump this unknown substances, and I know this probably isn't the right place to voice my concerns, but it is a very big concern, and I won't let it stop here.
John Lundquist, 9140 Field Road. I know the lady had mentioned the pumps running, I hear it in my backyard, the man's making a living there, I understand this, but I see this going the same way everything else does in the political world. I don't want the whole enchilada right now, I just want the shell. And once you get the shell, then it's easier to get the meat, and then you get the meat, you get the lettuce. This is how I look at it. They don't, it's like gun control in this world, they don't want to take your guns away, they just want to say, "You can't buy bullets." Then you can't buy clips. Pretty soon, you don't have no guns, and this is how I'm looking at this. And I don't know where he's pumping the water out, don't really care, because it don't come past my house, but if you go down Fruit Road from that piece of property where them trucks come in and out, and you look on the north side of the ditch, you tell me what kind of settlements ain't in that ditch where that water's running? Running right down this way and going up to the lake. If anybody has, if anybody's looked in their neighborhood to see what's going on, I hope that, I meant that he has a piece of property next to me. I hope he, I hope he succeeds in what he's doing, but this has all got to be done properly. And if, like this gentleman over here says, "This ain't the place for it," then you need to just speak up and say, "Right now, we can't do it, why should we even have any comments?"
Well, you have your right to comment, but those are not issues that we can address. Those are actually environmental issues that are handled by the State of Michigan, and what he can and can't do with the property is planning.
Like I said, he don't want, okay, you want to split the property. I think everybody that surrounds this, that area should have got a map. Nobody, like he said, nobody knows what piece of property he wants to split. It's like going to the grocery store and say, "Oh, give me some money for this food." I don't know what I'm getting. I pay taxes on the backside of that property, front side, whatever you want, and that's just my viewpoint of this whole situation. I think the information should be brought out, addressed appropriately, and sent to the proper place to be done. I know Mr. Presor, I've talked to him more than once, he's a pleasant man, he's a businessman, but I think it all needs to be done properly. Thank you.
I see no one else coming up. Did you want to address some of the comments?
Okay, I guess I'll address first the water testing that everyone is in such concern with. We have got a permit from the DEQ to discharge the water. That water is tested weekly by lab.
What is it tested for?
I want to see the proof.
Come on up here and look at the results.
How far down?
Actually, this is not what we're here for tonight.
Anyway, it is tested, the test results come back clean every single time. They just made a stink over Oakdale with the testing, it's water that's being pumped over there, their test came back perfectly fine as well today. So the water quality isn't an issue, you could drink the water, it's that clean.
And again, that has nothing to do with...
Right, I just want to address it so that everybody out here, everyone's here, I want them to know, you could drink that water, it's that clean. Okay, with regards to the trucks.
We're not here to discuss the water.
Yes, 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 they should drink it.
No, this is not the place for a discussion of the water, we're here to discuss...
Yeah, lab and ours taken, it was tested.
Yes. This is not the place for that discussion here.
With regards to the trucks that come in and out of my personal residence, I am allowed to have deliveries come into my home. My trucks leave out of the pit, and they come northward upfield, so if there's a truck going downfield, it came out of my pit.
That's one of the main rooms.
Again, I'm just addressing it so they're being aware of it. Okay, with regards to what we're here for, Giffles Webster, the Township planners, looked at all of these documents before we submitted anything, and they said, "We needed to be before this board, that's why we're before you," because they told us we needed to come here. There are many properties in this Township that have dual zoning. If, you know, for whatever reason you guys deny this zoning request, I'll come in tomorrow and I'll just apply for a land split for the property to go out on Oakdale. One way or another, it's going to happen. And as far as I'm aware, Assessing hasn't denied us anything, as was claimed.
Actually, I do get the letter from Assessing, I'm going to read into the record.
Okay, as far as I know, we've only applied for here and nothing's been denied.
You got anything more, you know? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I am going to, for clarification, read the letter from the Township Assessor with regard to this application and why it's here in accordance with this letter. "The application for a lot split combination on the above referenced property has been denied by the Assessor and the Building Zoning Official. The applicant wishes to split off a portion of the residential zone parcel and combine the remainder with the I, industrial I1 zone parcel. They opted not to submit a request to the Planning Commission for rezoning, but wish to combine the property and retain both zonings. The submittal was also denied because the Clay Township Zoning Ordinance does not have combined or dual zoning district. Also, the properties do not have similar statements of purpose as described in Section 7.01 and 16.01 of the ordinance regarding districts. Combining without rezoning would be contrary to the general purpose of the ordinance as stated in Section 1.03, which states, 'With reasonable consideration, among other things, the character of each district, its particular suitability for particular uses, the conservation of property values and natural resources, and the general inappropriate trend in character of building and population development, as studied and recommended within the master plan by the Clay Township Planning Commission, and endorsed and regulated, adopted therefore by the Township Board.'" So with that, take comments, questions from the board?
I would agree to a certain extent, I'm really not 100% sure why we have this at this point, but given that we do have it, in my opinion, this is one where we don't get past practical difficulty.
There is no practical difficulty. They're not even supposed to be here, because we have no power to rezonate.
Right, and even if it's not technically rezoning, and it's just allowing dual zoning, that would be allowing a non-conforming, would be creating a non-conformity when there's no practical difficulty reason to do so, in my opinion.
They'd have to split it off with each other, like she said, come back and do a full property split, but really, it should go to the Planning Department, should go back to the planners, unless they want to split the property into dual pieces.
We don't do so. We do not, the Township doesn't do so.
You speak up, we can hardly hear you.
We don't have a dual zoning district.
Right, which is why they're here, because they're asking for a variance to allow something that doesn't exist in the Township ordinances. But again, we can split hairs over all of that, I, again, just can't find a practical difficulty in why we would grant this.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to deny this, because there is no practical difficulty, and it is not within our power to do any rezoning, and therefore, I request that be denied.
Go ahead, second?
Don't second it.
And Eddy?
Yes.
Cherokee?
Yes.
Chmansky?
Sustain.
Sustain?
I don't understand why we're going with it, but... They're not even supposed to be here, because we have no power to rezon.
Right. And even if it's not technically rezoning, and it's just allowing dual zoning, that would be allowing a non-conforming, would be creating a non-conformity when there's no practical difficulty reason to do so, in my opinion.
They have to split it off with each other, like she said. Come back and do a full property split, but really, it should go to the planning department. Should go back to the planners, unless they want to split the property into dual pieces.
We don't do zoning. We do not. The Township doesn't do dual zoning. We don't have...
You speak up, and we can hardly hear you.
We don't have a dual zoning district.
Right. Which is why they're here, because they're asking for a variance to allow something that doesn't exist in the Township ordinances. But again, we can split hairs over all of that. I, again, just can't find a practical difficulty in why we would grant this.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to deny this, because there is no practical difficulty, and it is not within our power to do any rezoning, and therefore, I request that be denied.
Be denied. Go ahead, second.
I'll second it.
Addie?
Yes.
Sharkey?
Yes.
Schamansky?
I'll sustain.
Sustain?
I don't understand why we're going with it, but...
So you agree with this?
We can't, we have to vote one way or the other.
Yeah. Unless you have a conflict to address.
No, I don't. I mean, I guess with the, yes.
Babe? Bonnie Akner Slater, yes. The application is, for variances, denied.
I would recommend that they address the planning.
Put that in there. Yeah, I would send this right to the planning department.
Anyone that wishes to leave before the next hearing is welcome to do so. We have one more hearing tonight, and anybody who wishes to leave is welcome to do so while All right, if we could clear a room for anybody who doesn't want to stay, so we can move on to our next hearing, please. Will you get a moment? Will you shut the doors? All right, we will call our second case, with your name, ZBA Appeal two thousand twenty dash zero-zero-two-six-six-nine-zero, Middle Channel Drive. Property owner at six-six-nine-zero, Middle Channel Drive, is requesting variances to build a boathouse with height of sixteen feet nine inches, width and co sides. Per zoning ordinance one-twenty-six point three-zero-one, all boathouses which exceed fifteen feet in height, or with wells to accommodate more than two boats, shall be subject to a variance. A boathouse shall have all sides open for a height of not less than eight feet above the land level, and enclosed a distance of not more than three feet down to the top of the structure's top plate. Do we have the applicant here with us tonight? We'd like to approach, give your name and address, and give us a brief overview of what you're requesting.
My name is Dave Jaclyn. I'm at sixty-six ninety Middle Channel Drive, and I'm looking to build a boathouse.
Okay.
And get it done. I assume you guys got copies of everything I submitted?
All right. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would you like to sit down? Does anybody in the public have any comments on this? Want to address? Then I guess, does the board have comments that they would like to address?
Yeah, I do. I really think that this should be tabled until the next, we come up with it, because we've got a Planning Commission meeting next week that's going to pretty much get into the boathouse, and, because as it sits, it's an ordinance violation, and we need to address that.
I would agree with you. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but if you do, do a motion to table...
I'd like to make, I'd like to...
Can we just explain something real quick before we do anything?
You're welcome to make comment.
Well, what we're discussing here is, we have a Planning Commission meeting joint with us as well to go over this boathouse issues that has been arising the last few months. And what we're suggesting is that you just table this till next month meeting, so that we can, everything's being changed next week.
Potentially.
Potentially.
But I was understood that if I applied for a variance and explained why I wanted the variance, that...
According to the ordinance, it's no enclosed boathouses, and...
And what is the reasoning, I guess, for that?
That's what we're going to discuss at the meeting next week.
That's what we need to discuss.
Right.
Because there should not be any boathouses enclosed in Clay Township right now.
For, I mean, but what's the justification, I guess?
That's a...
It's just how it was written.
It's just how the ordinance is written.
Neighbors view. On the counter nineteen on the Middle Channel.
I know.
I understand.
And we understand it totally, and that's why I just want to table it until, because I've talked to Ari on this, I've talked to the planning, the planners that we hired, and they suggested that we should table this until the next meeting, until everybody gets it hammered out, because technically, it's a zoning ordinance violation.
Right. But there are, there have been variances given.
We understand that.
Right.
But we're having a meeting to address that next week.
Okay. So the next meeting for me would be in thirty days, you're saying?
Whatever the date is, in March.
So why do we have this meeting, I guess? Just to tell this? Why didn't they tell me upfront?
Yeah, why didn't they tell us to...
They just announced the meeting yesterday.
They just announced the meeting, was it yesterday or today?
Yesterday. They just announced this meeting that we're going to have yesterday, so that's why I think it would be just beneficial to you.
I understand. It's just, I've been working on this for a year now.
Right.
But if it gets changed, it'll...
Are there no enclosed boathouses at this place, on the island?
Well, now that...
There's all kinds of...
What are you going to say? We're not here to talk about what is and what isn't, and we're here to talk about this variance request, and this variance request right now, we're having a meeting to discuss, and there's a motion on the floor to table. Did I get a second?
She does.
Okay.
And then you were getting ready to ask.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Carol Bane?
Yes.
Dennis Schamansky?
Yes.
Devin Sharkey?
Yes.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Bonnie Akner Slater, yes. That is tabled until the next meeting. All right, do we have any unfinished business?
We'll be known for the next meeting.
Oh, we'll maybe actually want to eat it and turn over.
Yes.
Second by joining. Yes.
Will I be contacted over here?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, yes. Won't be forgotten.
And I go on, after the vote, and see where the list is. And there's, you can see where I live, there's no neighbors that care.
Right.
No, we understand.
We understand. We'll address that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any unfinished business anyone wants to discuss?
Well, I'm just glad to hear that you're here.
I was going to say, I'm glad to hear that we're doing this meeting.
Yes.
Right. This needed to be addressed for a while. But I think, and then, right now.
Do we have any report from the Planning Commissioner?
Yeah. They, we went through, and Blue Porsche now is officially ready to go, and announced some of the dual meetings with the Planning Commission, ZBA, and the board. And hopefully, we're going to have the Building Inspector there, and hopefully, we're going to have the Co-ordinator there at this meeting. That's all I'd like to say.
Okay.
Other matters to be reviewed as any word of appeals, correspondence?
I don't believe we have any this evening. Anything from any of the board members that they want to discuss?
Because I'm on the board, we're board of trustees, our main thing is always flooding going on.
Yes.
It's been a top priority for the Township at large, and so we spend a lot of time talking about that. And I already, really doing a lot of, going to meetings and this, and we're trying to find out, you know, how high is the water going to go? We don't know.
Like I said, for anybody that wants to come, New Baltimore's having a meeting next Thursday at the Donald Public Library. We have the Army Corps of Engineers coming, McComb County Emergency Management.
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Next Monday?
Next Thursday.
At the library?
At the library. So I'm hoping to get some additional information there.
Okay. That's good to know.
Because, yes, we all, all of us waterflood communities, live and breathe it.
There's meetings, 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 but that's the way we get things solved, so that we all know
Right.
what's going on.
Yeah. All right. Any additional public comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.